Welcome to the December 7, 2020 Menlo Park Planning Commission Meeting. We are calling to order at 7:03 PM. We have with us at least six of our commissioners. I see Andrew Barnes. I see Chris DeCarty. I see Larry Cale. I see Camille Kennedy. I saw Michelle Tate, yep. And Mr. Doran, are you present? So, Mr. Doran may be a bit delayed. I am Henry Riggs, your chair, and that concludes roll call. We also have staff with us tonight. I believe I saw Karina Sandemeyer. And we will start with reports and announcements. Ms. Sandemeyer.
Good evening, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. I don't have any reports or announcements tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners tonight? Such as, you know, when is when is the Planning Division going to be open to the public? No, no taunting questions. All right. All right, we'll start our evening then with public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar, which tonight consists of the approval of minutes. Each speaker may address the Commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. All right, moving from the public, well, let me first ask, is Mr. Tapia here with us tonight? Good evening, Leo.
Good evening, Commission, members of the public and staff. Again, as Chair Riggs succinctly stated, if there are any comments at this time, please feel free to hit that green hand icon on your right side of your screen. I believe it should be on the right side of your screen. That way, you can send a notification to staff, so that way, we can go ahead and activate your microphone if you do have a question at this time. And I believe we have a question, Chair Riggs. I will go ahead and introduce the speaker. So Pamela Jones, your microphone should be active now. You do have a commenter question at this time.
Okay, yes, thank you. Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park. Good evening, Chair Mr. Riggs, Vice Chair Mr. Doran, Commissioners and staff. And I have two quick questions or information, but one question is, would it be possible for the staff to update the development project map? So, the Bayfront West Side includes Menlo Flats. It's not on there, and it would be nice to have a complete map and also 111 Independence Drive. And the second thing I have is, the Housing Commission had a presentation on how the RENA numbers are developed, and that was that they're a special meeting on November 11th. And I don't know if you all knew about it, or hopefully you did and were able to attend. The meeting was recorded because I saw them record red light in the upper left-hand corner. And there's also a PowerPoint that they did make available. And just, you know, for consistency, it would be great if you all had the same information that the Housing Commission did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And the meeting referred to did lay out, among other things, that RENA uses four basis of methodology, although, for some reason, I listed three. They refer to the planned Bay Area. They evaluate towns based on jog proximity and on something they call high opportunity areas. It's significant because the way in which RENA determines how many units should be zoned for in our city in effect dictates our zoning. So, this is a very important process. It's group mandated by the state. And I think it's valuable for all residents to be aware of what's going on. Mr. Tapia, do you see any other comments waiting?
At this time, I am not seeing any other comments or questions, Chair Riggs.
All right, thank you. In that case, I will close the public comment period. And let's move on to item E, our consent calendar, and this consists of approval of the November 2, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do we have any corrections or comments from the Commissioners on on the minutes as presented to us? Mr. DeCarty?
I do not, and I would move that we approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Cale?
A second?
All right, thank you. So, we have motions to and second, to approve the minutes of the November 2 Planning Commission meeting. I will call names for a hand signal or vocal in alphabetical order. Mr. Barnes. That's an I. Mr. DeCarty. I. Mr. Doran here. All right, Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Kennedy. Yes, and Ms. Tate. And I vote affirmation. So, we have 6-0 to approve the consent calendar. All right, moving on comes to the heart of the meeting tonight. We have item F1. This is a public hearing. F1 and G1, the two major items on the calendar tonight are associated with a single staff report. They are both for 165 Jefferson Drive, known as Menlo Flats. Item F1 will be heard first, and this is a scoping session for the environmental impact report that is required of this project. The project is a request for a use permit, architectural control, below-market rate housing agreement, heritage tree removal permits, and environmental review to redevelop the project site with approximately 158 multifamily dwelling units and approximately 15,000 square feet of commercial space on a 1.38 acre parcel. The proposed mixed-use building would be eight stories in height, including three levels of above-grade podium parking. The commercial space would be located on the ground floor and second floor. The project site is located in the R M U B, which is the residential mixed-use bonus zoning district. The project site currently contains one single-story, approximately 24,300 square-foot office building that would be demolished. The proposed building would contain approximately 154,729 square feet of gross floor area of residential uses with a floor area rate, I'm sorry, a floor area ratio of 257.5%. The proposed commercial component would contain approximately 15,000 square feet of gross floor area with a floor area ratio of 24.9%. The proposed project would utilize bonus level gross floor area density, GFA density, and I'm sorry, GFA comma density and height in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project would include a below-market rate housing agreement that requires a minimum of 15% or 21 units in this case be affordable. The applicant is proposing to incorporate 20 additional market rate units, which are included in the total 158 units, per the density bonus provisions in the BMR housing program, which allows density and FAR bonuses and exceptions to the city's zoning ordinance requirements when BMR units are incorporated into the project. The project also includes a hazardous materials use permit request to allow for diesel generator to operate in the event of an emergency. And to make a note of who our staff liaison is on this project. Who do we have in staff to speak to the speak to the project?
Chair Riggs and members of the Commission, Principal Planner Kyle Pirata here. We actually have our contract planner, Pyle Begat, and so I'm going to turn it over to her to give the presentation from staff and answer any questions of the Commission. So with that, I'll look to Pyle and Leo and Bond to get the presentation up for, there she is, thanks.
Good evening, Ms. Begat.
Thank you, Chair. Kyle, members of the Commission, members of the public. Good evening. The project before you this evening is the redevelopment of an existing site located at 165 Jefferson Drive. The project site is located east of Marsh Road on the north side of Jefferson Drive. The project consists of I think my mouse is not working.
Try again, you should have control now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. One, I'm still not able to move the slideshow. Thank you. So, the project consists of demolishing the existing approximately 24,000 square-foot building on the site and then redeveloping the site with 158 residential units and approximately 15,000 square feet of commercial space, all housed in eight-story buildings. Of the commercial space proposed, approximately 1,050 square feet would be dedicated to community amenities. This evening, staff would like the Commission to look at a couple items associated with the project. The first item is the environmental impact scope. This is the first step in creating the focus environmental impact report for the project. Staff wishes that the Commission solicit comments from the community and provide your comments on the environmental impact scope. And second item for this evening for this project is to conduct a study session to look at the various aspects of the project design. Following my presentation, the applicant Gray Star will give a detailed presentation on the project design, following which the city's consultant LSA will review the several steps necessary to create the focus environmental impact report for the project. In order to move through these items smoothly, staff recommends that we pass out the two items, one after the other. After LSA's presentation, staff recommends that the Planning Commission ask questions on the environmental impact scope, open up the public hearing and solicit comments from the community on the on the scope, and then conclude the item with providing your own comments. After the environmental impact scope portion is discussed, staff recommends that the Planning Commission solicit comments on the design of the project in a similar manner. Staff is not requesting that the Commission take any action on any of the components of the project being discussed today. With that, I would like to conclude my presentation, and I thank you for your attention. We did receive one comment from the community member after the circulation of the staff report, and that was shared with the Commission via email earlier today. And it is also attached to the agenda on the city's website. With this, I would, I thank you for your attention and would like to conclude. I'm opposed here for any questions that you might have while we discuss the various aspects of this project. And would like to turn it over to Gray Star, led by Andrew, to discuss the various details of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Begat. And welcome, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. It's good to be here. Okay, I think I've got control. Just make sure. I'm sorry.
Through the chair.
Please.
You might want to note that Commissioner Doran has joined the meeting.
Thank you. With all these little boxes, I might have missed that. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, so, good evening, Chair Riggs and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for having us. It's very good to be back with you. My name is Andrew Morcos, and I am the Senior Development Director for Gray Star in Menlo Park. I'm here to give you a brief update on Menlo Flats located at 165 Jefferson in the Bayside area of Menlo Park. This is our fourth multifamily project in the Bayside area of Menlo Park. And we'll focus this presentation overall on how we've incorporated your comments from the April 2020 session on this project into the project and highlight those aspects along with an update. First, I thought it would be helpful occasion of the project having trouble with mouse.
Yeah, we are also getting sort of a dragging
The next slide.
I should just let you know.
Oh, sorry.
No, we have had some go-to webinar slow moments, and we'll hope that they recover once images are loaded.
Okay, so, I thought we'd start with a overall overview of Gray Star in Menlo Park. Our first project was Alon Menlo Park, completed in 2017, was 146 units at 3645 Haven Avenue. We now have three projects and entitlements. Menlo Uptown and Menlo Portal are the furthest along. And as you know, we're here discussing Menlo Flats. Between these three projects, between these four projects, I should say, we've worked with the city to provide over 1,100 total multifamily units to Menlo Park. Over 140 of the projects we have under entitlements will be affordable BMR units. To give you a point of comparison, Menlo Park currently has 477 total BMR rental units. So, these projects alone would increase the number of BMRs in the city to over, by over 28%. The three projects pursuing entitlements will also contribute to the RENA cycle substantially. If these projects are approved, they will make up 32% of Menlo Park's anticipated total RENA allocation. Just a quick overview of the three projects. Menlo Uptown is 441 units and 42 townhomes. Excuse me, 441 multifamily and 42 townhomes. An update on status is that the draft EIR was fourth, and so we're, and we will be back presenting that project in early January. Menlo Portal is following shortly behind it. It's 335 multifamily rental units and about 35,000 square feet of non-residential space. That draft EIR is anticipated to be released in January, so following shortly on the heels of Menlo Uptown. The project we're here to update you on tonight is Menlo Flats. And again, it's 158 units made up of small studios, one and four bedrooms, four baths, and about 15,000 square feet of non-residential space. Just go to some of the project highlights. This project will contribute 21 affordable BMR units, which will be located onsite and equitably distributed throughout the project. Over 1,000 square feet of the 15,000 square feet of non-residential space is being allocated to contribute to the project's community amenity requirement. And the project is environmental goals of Menlo Park, which are ambitious, lead gold, design standard, and 100% renewable energy, EV charging for 100%, EV pre-wiring for 100% of the required parking and EV chargers for 15%. And 6,274 square feet of publicly accessible open space, which exceeds the city's requirement by 67%. This is up from 47% at our last meeting, and it's a relatively small site, so we feel this was an accomplishment and, you know, in response to Planning Commissioners' comments. Lastly, connectivity. The Paseo that's on the east side of the project, we've allocated most of the open space to that area at the front, and it will eventually connect Jefferson to Constitution as a walking and biking 132 bicycle as well. And then I wanted to comment the comment that was submitted to Planning Commission and staff regarding deliveries. We are working with the city to allocate street frontage space to Ubers or Rideshare or deliveries so that traffic flow isn't interrupted by stopping of delivery trucks or delivery cars. And so, we would love those to be near our projects, and we'll continue working with the city in that vein. With that, I'd like to introduce you to our team. Clark Manus from Heller Manus is our lead architect. Karen is on from PGA, who's our landscape architect. And with that, I'll hand it over to Clark to discuss the project.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Chair Riggs and fellow Commissioners. I want to thank you for your contributions. They are a great thing for your city. Chair Riggs, can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. As introduction for this notice of preparation and the study session to follow, I wanted to take this opportunity to refresh your memory on this project designed for Menlo Flats. Your comments were well received, and we've reflected many of these changes in the staff report and the SB 330 recent metal drawings that are in your package tonight. The changes reflect the street Paseo Plaza and the frontage, and we certainly will continue to refine the design with staff and the Commission's input. Next. The massing of the project design is what I would describe as an eroded U form, offering the opportunity to create an exterior environment, and Karen will talk to more about that later, that connects the public street-level plaza at the entry to the Paseo. And the Paseo Plaza is visually connected to the upper-level residential open space courtyard and the associated amenities that will be activated by the residents. The introduction of some bay windows along the residential wing fronting the Paseo facade evolved also from some of the Commission's comments, need to enhance the Paseo. The proposed neighborhood amenity space, which we touched on earlier, that fronts the street-level plaza has an elevated terrace that's contiguous with the elevated building entries and accommodating for sea level rise. Setbacks and the modulations that are visible along Jefferson Street will provide the opportunity for enhancement, as well as the setback will provide the opportunity for roof decks for some of these residential units. Next. This corner of the building is really designed to emphasize the importance of the pedestrian vehicular and service access. On the left side, the location of the lane is designed to all provide vehicular access through the block Andrew touched on earlier onto the adjacent Uptown project site. Next. And a view looking from the adjacent Uptown project provides the opportunity to see down ahead for the doggone area that's for resident amenities, as well as connections for people walking around the building to the Paseo that's on the east side of the building. Next. So, on the plans, this being the ground floor plan, this is one foot above the base flood elevation as determined by the regulations. Commercial use that you see in blue conceals parking along Jefferson Street frontage. Along the west side, frontage, which is the left vehicular and service access, as I described earlier, accommodated. On the east side, on the right, bicycle parking and pedestrian access conceal parking along the Paseo frontage. And as you can see earlier, and Karen will talk about this more, we've tried to enhance and screen that as much as possible. And also, then along the Jefferson frontage, the adjacent residential and commercial lobbies are visible in the pink area. Next. So, this is the courtyard plan, and the courtyard plan has residential units that wrap around a courtyard that accommodates the open space for residents, a pool, and any of the frontages associated with that. And what you can see at the corner there is what I described earlier, is that sort of eroded form in the basis for being able to provide connection to the street-level plaza below. Next. And finally, in the massing, one of the things that we tried to do, based on what I shared earlier in this eroded U, we provided this opportunity of basically just doing an L shape for the units at this level and the amenity and its open space terrace, which overlook the pedestrian plaza and the Paseo Plaza at the ground level. It's a feature that I think will highly animate the Paseo. Karen is going to describe the special exterior environment that we think the project has created in facilitating this. I'll be available to answer questions. The study session, let me now turn it over to Karen.
Thank you, Clark. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Karen Kulewski, PGA Design, with PGA Design, landscape architect for the project. My presentation is going to focus on the changes to the landscape plans addressing previous comments. This first slide shows the revised street-level plans. And next slide. This slide shows on the left, the previous Paseo design from the April 2020 study session, and on the right is the is the revised Paseo plan and front corner. And the design of the Paseo has been revised to integrate with the adjacent and future 175 Jefferson Street And the design of the Paseo has been revised to integrate with the adjacent and future one seventy-five Jefferson Street project. We're showing a future design for that adjacent Paseo to ensure integration between the two sites. The revised Paseo provides a modulated walking path with two types of paving, benches, places for artwork, and larger canopy trees. The rear pathway features a connection to the future one eighty-six Constitution Townhome site. And we have, we have a dog play area there and as well as a separate pathway for pedestrians connecting onto the adjacent site. The dog run area has been reimagined with artificial turf and round seating elements. And in the project site as a whole, we are removing four heritage trees, so eight replacement heritage trees are required. We are exceeding this replacement and replacing with over twenty-three new heritage trees. The heritage tree species will include zelkova and Brisbane box. The biggest change is the plaza in the southeastern corner, which is now including an exit from the neighborhood benefit space onto a raised patio. This patio will step down with a tiered wooden seating, creating an inviting and activated corner. The seating will also connect to a plaza which anchors the corner and entry to the Paseo. This provides activation at that corner and a welcoming connection of public and private space. And next slide. This slide shows the podium level courtyard with pool and amenities. And then the next slide. This slide shows the roof deck space with the outdoor space connecting to the interior community room. And with that, we would like to thank the commissioners for listening to our presentation today and would like to solicit feedback from the commissioners at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, both of you. At this time, I think I'll ask commissioners if they have any just basic questions regarding the project as presented, and then we'll move to public comment before getting in deeper. Our first role tonight is the E I R, so I suggest that we focus on E I R questions and E I R subjects at this time. Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, this is related to the E I R. Actually, no, I'll hold. Public comment may raise it. Thank you. I'll wait.
All right. And any other questions that would relate to the E I R?
Through the, through the chair. If I could if I could jump in real quick, we do have a presentation from our city's Sequa consultant still for this evening. So pile just, pile just mentioned that to me, and I wanted to jump in quickly and and let you know that we do have one more presentation still, if we, if we could take that. We can certainly answer any questions that you have of the applicant for clarifications first. Otherwise, we can move into L S A's presentation, the city's Sequa consultant who prepared the initial study and the notes of preparation of the E I R.
All right. Does anyone have anything that they would like to insert now before the presentation? All right, seeing none. Welcome, Mr. Wiswell.
Good evening. I'm not sure. It looks like I may have control of the screen or not at this point. If not, I can, I can announce next slide too.
You do have control of the screen.
Great, thank you. As mentioned, I'm Matthew Wiswell, a planner with L S A, with the city's consultant for environmental review of the Menlo Flats project. And with me tonight is Teresa Wallace, our principal in charge. I know that most of you have probably heard a presentation pretty similar to this a couple of times before, but there may be some members of the public who haven't, so please, please bear with me. Can I get the next slide, please? I don't know if I have.
Okay, want to try again? So you should have.
There we go. Great. So this first slide was the topics that I'll cover in my brief presentation tonight, including the purpose of this company meeting, an overview of Connect Menlo and the E I R and its relationship to this project, the initial study that was prepared for the project, the E I R that will be prepared, and an overview of the environmental review process and schedule, and then we'll open it up for questions and public comment. So the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, requires lead agencies that approve projects to identify environmental impacts associated with those projects, and then either avoid or mitigate those impacts. So the purpose of scoping tonight is to engage interested parties early on in the environmental review process and get your thoughts on the topics that should be considered in the environmental review of the project. The, it's important to note that the merits of the project are not considered in the E I R or during the environmental review process. So your comments for this portion of the meeting tonight should really just focus on the specific issues that relate to impacts on the environment. They should range on, on the environmental topics that we should consider in the E I R, as well as any specific issues of concern related to the environmental topics that should be considered by the city and us as the E I R consultants, the approach and methods used in the analysis, and potential mitigation measures or alternatives that you think should be considered. So in November twenty sixteen, as you know, the city council approved an update to the land use and circulation elements of the general plan and related zoning changes commonly referred to as Connect Menlo. The Connect Menlo final E I R provided a program level analysis of the development potential envisioned for the entire city, including the increased development potential in the bayfront area where the project is located. The city of East Palo Alto challenged the city certification of the Connect Menlo E I R, and to settle litigation, the parties entered into a settlement agreement that allows for environmental review of a later activity, such as the project, that is consistent with the program to be limited to the effects that were not analyzed as significant in the prior E I R or are subject to substantial reduction or avoidance through project provisions, but require certain projects, including those utilizing bonus level development like the project to conduct a focused E I R with regard to housing and transportation. Environmental review of the proposed project will tier from the Connect Menlo E I R and will also comply with the terms of the settlement agreement. So as an initial step in the environmental review process, the initial study was prepared to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of the project and determine what levels of additional analysis would be appropriate for the project E I R. The initial study discloses relevant impacts and mitigation measures covered in the Connect Menlo E I R and discusses whether the project is within the parameters of the Connect Menlo E I R. Like to note that although we are tiering off of the Connect Menlo E I R in terms of the maximum development potential considered, we're also evaluating the project against the baseline because of conditions as they exist at the site today. And are also evaluating the project against the currently applicable regulations and thresholds. For example, the sequel guidelines were updated since the action of the Connect Menlo E I R, and those changes were considered and addressed in the initial study review and will also be considered. So based on the conclusions of the initial study, the topics shown on this slide will not be further evaluated because the project is not anticipated to result in a significant effect related to these issue topics or because the initial study found that these topic areas were adequately addressed through the program level E I R prepared for Connect Menlo. So for the topics of cultural resources, geology and soils, which now includes paleontological resources, hazards and hazardous materials and noise, it was determined that there are significant impacts, but the applicable mitigation measures from the Connect Menlo E I R would ensure that those impacts would be less than significant. So the focused E I R that will be prepared will analyze whether the proposed project would result in a significant impact to the five topics shown on the slide. The topic of air quality, the Connect Menlo E I R identified mitigation measures that require a technical assessment of the project operation and construction period air quality impacts. The site is also located in proximity to several major roadways, which requires the preparation of a health risk assessment. For greenhouse gas emissions, the project's contribution to emissions will be studied based on the transportation-related impacts identified for the project. Similarly, for noise, although the Connect Menlo E I R determined that impacts would be less than significant with mitigation measures, there is the possibility that the transportation analysis conducted for the project will identify new or more severe impacts related to transportation and therefore transportation related noise as well than, than what was previously analyzed, so that'll be included in the E I R. And then for population and housing, a housing needs assessment will be prepared pursuant to the terms of the settlement agreement with East Palo Alto and will also be covered in the E I R. And then lastly, the terms of the settlement agreement also require, require the preparation of a project-specific transportation impact assessment. As you probably well know, this assessment will also include an analysis of potential impacts at twenty-nine different intersections and the identification of specific mitigation measures. The baseline conditions for intersections, intersection evaluation will be based on recent intersection counts conducted by the city. And then finally, that sixth topic listed on the slide there, the E I R is required to evaluate a reasonable range of alternatives. These alternatives should attain most of the basic project objectives and should avoid or substantially lessen any significant effects of the project. So the alternatives are developed after the impacts are identified and with input during, received during this N O P comment period. One alternative that is always considered is the no project alternative, which is required by SEQA. And then from there, we'll use the impacts that we identify as well and comments to determine the rest of the alternatives. There we go. So this slide shows the overall schedule anticipating for the environmental review process. So on November sixteenth, the city issued a notice of preparation or an N O P notifying interested parties and responsible agencies that an E I R will be prepared, and the initial study was included for review. The comment period to provide public comments on the scope and the content of the E I R ends on December seventh, or sorry, December twenty-first. So in about two weeks, during this time, interested parties are encouraged to submit comments on the, on the scope of the E I R writing, and they could also provide comments tonight verbally. Over the next several months, we'll, we'll prepare the E I R, which is expected to be published sometime spring twenty twenty-one. After the E I R is published, there will be a forty-five day comment period or longer during, it's a minimum of forty-five days. So during that period, interested parties will have an opportunity to review the E I R and submit comments to the city. The city will also hold a public hearing on the draft D I R during the forty-five day comment period, and at that time, the public can also provide verbal or written comments. So just for reference, as Andrew mentioned earlier, the one eleven Independence and Menlo Uptown projects have both had their draft E I Rs published and are now within that forty, minimum forty-five day public review period. And then after the close of the comment period, we will then prepare written responses to each substantive comment received on the adequacy of the E I R analysis in a response to comments document. The response to comments document will also include any revisions to the draft E I R if any are necessary. Together, draft the E I R and the response to comments document constitute the final E I R, which will be published and available for review a minimum of ten days before any hearings on certification of the E I R and approval of the project are held. Once the final E I R is complete, the city will, will consider certification and then approval of the project as a separate action. Of course, the public may attend those hearings and provide comments on the final E I R as well. So that meeting, receipt certification in that meeting are anticipated for summer of twenty twenty-one right now. So again, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to engage the public early on in the environmental review process and to get your thoughts on the topics that should be evaluated in the E I R. Even if you provide comments verbally at tonight's meeting, I would encourage you to also submit them again in writing again prior to December twenty-first. And with that, we're available for any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners tonight? At this time. All right, seeing none, we'll go straight to public comment and see what what concerns the public may have. As Mr. Tapia mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, if you would like to make a public comment, the method is you look for the hand icon that is on the right of your screen. I believe it's adjacent to the dropdown menu or the go-to webinar menu. If you click on that hand icon, staff will know that someone wants to speak tonight. They will announce your name and, and call you to speak. So please take a look if that's what your intent is tonight and let us know. You can also, by the way, if the hand icon is a difficulty, which can be so with, with applications. At the bottom of the go-to webinar menu is a chat session, and you can type in a message like, I would like to speak, and this is who I am, and we can help get you connected. So with that, we'll give a half a minute or so to see if anyone steps forward to speak.
Chair Riggs, if I may, I believe I saw one virtual hand raised, and then it disappeared, so it may come back.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think this one is trying to connect, so I will go ahead and activate the microphone for Pamela Jones. Just as a quick reminder, there is a three-minute time limit for all public commenters. So Pamela Jones, you should be able to activate your microphone now.
Yes, thank you, Pamela Jones again, and I want to thank the staff for sending me personally, the notifications on, on these projects. I have, I'm not sure where this belongs, but I have a question on the calculations for the B M R that I hadn't noticed on previous projects, and that is the fifteen percent was based on a hundred and thirty-eight units, and, and then that was added, and then because they did the fifteen percent, then it says that an additional twenty market rate units can now be applied, and it's a hundred and fifty-eight dwelling units. So I was a little confused on that. And then the second thing is the amenities list is outdated. Out of the twenty-nine items on there, at least thirteen of them have either been completed or already in another project, so this really needs to be updated, and I'd also like to request again that the amenities be decided by the community and with all of the project. I think there's a total of four going on in, in the area that a community meeting be convened and that residents have the opportunity to decide what amenities that they want, that we want over here. It should not be a staff decision. So thank you, and.
Ms. Jones, you faded out, but I think with a thank you, that was the end of your comments. Am I right?
Yep, yes, you are correct. I'm confused here. Yes, you're correct. I was done.
All right, thank you. So with that, first, I would like to ask staff, there is something a little bit tricky about how we figure out fifteen percent. I noticed that in the other two projects that I was reviewing over the weekend. And while I can follow it when I reread it, perhaps for the sake of the public, if Ms. Baggett could clarify, or Ms. Sandomeyer could clarify how we under the ordinance, how we determine the fifteen percent and then the bonus. under the ordinance, how we determine the 15% and then the bonus, bonus units. Ms. Baggett.
Um, can you hear me? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Excellent. Yes. So the, for this project, the 138 units will include 21, that is 16% below market rate unit. Under our, the density bonus guidelines, we allow additional units to be added on as an incentive of providing affordable units. So the calculation basically is that if your project ends up providing 21 below market rate units, which is equal to 15% of your project, you are then entitled to add additional 21 units, which would be market rate units under the density bonus guidelines for City of Menlo Park. So the Menlo Flats project is adding 20 additional units, which brings the total amount of units to 158.
All right. And the additional 20 units themselves are not subject to the BMR requirements. They're just.
That is correct. They are, they are, they are, they are being allowed as an incentive because the project is providing affordable units.
Right. So when the casual observer sees 152 units and 15% and does the math, that's not the way it works. There's 20 units in there that aren't subject to BMR. All right. And
That is.
And we've been through that, but I can imagine that the the public are thinking we're using new math. All right. So I would, Mr. Tapia, unless you see any other hands raised, I will close public comment.
I can confirm, Chair, there are no other comments at this time.
Thank you. All right. So we'll close public comment at this time and bring it back to the commission members to address the scoping of the EIR. Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank the staff and the consultants for the scoping on the EIR. And the presentation was very clear. Really, really appreciate it. My question, and I'm not sure who is best to answer this, is how the proposed diesel generator fits both within the EIR and then also within Menlo Park standards for use of green energy in the, in the building. But so maybe first to Mr. Wiswell on the use of a diesel generator and how that's looked at in the EIR. And then to staff about how a diesel generator fits in with the city's standards.
Sure. So the, as you mentioned, the project does include a generator. And that's included in the project description for the initial study. And then when we conduct the air quality analysis, we use a emissions modeling software called CaliMod. And there's an input there for specifically for generators. So we include a certain number of hours that we anticipate the generator to run on a yearly basis and then calculate the emissions based on that.
How do you calculate, if this is a backup diesel generator, presumably on one level, it's never used or it's only used infrequently. My understanding is it does need to be tested. How do you, how do you incorporate the fact that this is a backup into modeling the number of hours?
So we are pretty conservative with that. I, as I understand it, the testing is about half an hour every month. So if you, if you test it every month, that would be about six hours. And the, we've assumed up to 50 hours to account for testing and then any potential use every year.
Okay, thank you. And then my broader question, as long as we're on the topic for staff, how is the diesel generator thought about in the context of the city's energy use, energy efficiency and alternative energy standards?
Sure. So I can take that question. So the, the city zoning ordinance does allow for emergency generators in the RMU zoning district. And so while the city does have, you know, robust, you know, reach codes with regard to renewable energy and onsite energy generation, we do allow emergency generators for the purposes, you know, if there was to be a power outage and there was to need to be emergency power to the site. So generators are proposed at a number of multifamily projects that we're reviewing in the Bayfront area as well as, you know, the commercial buildings as well. So that is something that can be considered through the process. It certainly is not meant to be an energy source on a daily basis, but for emergencies and the routine testing, of course.
So is it reasonable under the EIR or reasonable, I guess this is for you, Mr. Peralta, to ask for an understanding about why an emergency diesel generator is selected as opposed to an emergency generator that runs on natural gas or as opposed to an emergency storage that would be utilized by battery? And understanding the different cost implications, operating implications and environmental impact, given that we've got this standard, as you noted, a robust standard?
There certainly could be a policy discussion for the planning commission to consider as part of the overall project review. I think from an environmental analysis standpoint, the diesel generator will be studied and that would be in terms of environmental impact, the potential greatest impact. So studying that in the EIR, you know, would be the appropriate approach. And in this case, it was studied in the initial study and we are actually, the hazard material is scoped out or proposed to be scoped out of the EIR. So it has been studied for compliance with, with the zoning ordinance and with the standards that the Seminole County, the Fire District, the Bay Area Air Supply Management District have with regard to air quality and then greenhouse gas emissions. So those will be looked at in the EIR, but the hazards point part will, is scoped out. So I just want to come in, make that clear. In terms of the policy implication, that's certainly part of the youth permit for the overall project, the planning commission can consider and ask the applicant for more information on the diesel fuel versus other sources for an emergency generator. That's certainly appropriate, but I would, I would refer that to the study session component later.
Yep. Very clear. Thank you very much.
Interesting. Other questions or comments regarding the scoping, Mr. Kev?
Um, maybe this is not the right time, but I think it is. I had a question about the open space and how it, I'm not sure who to, on the application side, the applicant side will can address this, but how we increased our open space?
Sure, I'm touched on that. So we increased the open space when our landscape architect was the southeast corner. It out that we increased the space there and that's where the majority of the space was gained.
We lost some of your, I'm sorry, Larry, I just wanted to point out, we lost some of your audios to confirm. That was at the southeast corner?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. The southeast corner of the site, you know, in response to comments from commission, we made this area more generous and it's been added to the overall open space.
So just to confirm, this is all, the game is all at grade level or not counting terraces or anything at a higher level?
All at grade level, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks Commissioner DeCarty for bringing up the diesel generators. Going to ask that. And just off topic, I'm my, I apologize, my camera's going to be on and off just having a technical issue. So I'm still here, but I have to play with this for a little bit. Thank you.
Other commissioners to comment or question at this moment? I do have a follow-up regarding the, or perhaps I should say a related question regarding the diesel generators. It occurred to me that, given the performance of PG&E, both in the summer in terms of heat issues and occasionally we have rolling blackouts. And also in the summer, we have recently had fire issues, although those don't so far tend to involve the communities along the bay. Although they certainly have involved Berkeley and Oakland in the past. And then there, of course, are the winter storms, which can take out whole zones. So in our increased reliance on electrical as we step away from fossil fuels and indeed require buildings to be all electrical, including this project, the, the degree to which we count on the electrical supply has, has been ramped up. I wondered if it wouldn't be appropriate that the EIR make the assumption that a certain number of days per year, the diesel generators will run, not for testing, but for actual backup power in order to back up PG&E. So that's one suggestion. And then secondly, oh, I had another electrical concern. So it slipped my mind. So why don't I let someone else ask questions? All right, seeing none, I will follow up then. I'd like to confirm as part of the burden and how it's determined, the burden of a new building on the existing infrastructure. And it may be in the project description and I leaf right past it. But what is the solar capacity that is proposed for this building? And, and how does that compare to the roughly 500 kilowatt per year load that this building is anticipated to put on the system? And I guess that question would be addressed to Mr. Marcos.
The solar on the building has not been designed yet. It's still very early. In design, there will definitely be solar on the project. But we haven't gotten to the point where we've quantified it yet. So I hesitate to answer that question just yet, but we can mark it down and get back to you when we have designed that portion of the building.
All right. So then I guess I would ask Mr. Wiswell, can you? I guess your EIR is going to have to assume that this is full electrical load on the infrastructure.
That's correct.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. And then and then I guess just for and this would relate to our transportation section in the EIR. What is the proposal here for alternative, providing for alternative transit? Has that been analyzed by the prospective group of residents that are anticipated, which is all we can do at this time? For example, how many will want to get to Caltrain? How many will simply want to go directly down to Mountain View? As you've heard me note before, perhaps the first person to sign up to get an apartment here will work at Facebook, but his partner or her partner or mate may work at LinkedIn. And also that person who works at Facebook 18 months from now may move to Google. So I guess I should ask, what is the baseline assumption for how many residents will be able to bicycle or take the Facebook tram to work as opposed to how many will commute conventionally? And then to what degree does the EIR reflect transit alternative reductions that would be a paid part of the project?
So I can, I'll address your first part of your question and then maybe a follow-up on your second part. So for determining how many people take alternative transit, such as, as the bus or Caltrain or, or walker bike, the baseline that we start with is based on census data that is, that is collected for the, for the area. As part of the American Community Survey, that data is collected on how many people commute to work, whether they take a single occupancy vehicle or walk or bike or take some sort of alternative transit. So that's where that analysis starts. And then there's some adjustments made for, for more local conditions as well. On the second part of your question, are you, are you getting at the alternatives to the EIR? And I guess you expand on your question a little bit further.
Um, yes. For example, if the project committed providing a a transport vehicle to the train station with intervals of every 10 minutes between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And then again, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM, that presumably would affect your calculation on transportation impacts and pollution. So is that enumerated in the project? And therefore enabled you to count a reduction of, of that mode of transport?
Yes, absolutely. So that would be a transportation demand management measure. And that would be included in a transportation demand management plan. And then the reductions for which are accounted or are quantified by CAPCOA, which is the, I don't know the whole acronym off the top of my head, but it's essentially the Air Pollution Control Officers Association of California. They have a report that quantifies how much reduction transportation demand management measures provide. And that, and they qualify that based on where the project is located. So an urban project such as this one is clearly going to be able to benefit much more from those types of measures than a really suburban project. So to answer your question, yes, those are accounted for. And yes, we can apply a reduction for, for measures such as those.
All right. And partly because of the audio, I didn't get that quite clearly. Is the, are the APOC tables being used to predict alternative transit? Or did you get in the project description a proposed commitment to transit?
So I, I may need to check with staff on this, but the applicant typically prepares a transportation demand management plan. And then we would use the air pollution control report to quantify how much of a reduction those measures would provide in terms of transit use or automobile use as well as air quality and greenhouse gas emissions.
All right. That answers my second question. And then getting back to the first question. You say you're basically referring to census data in order to figure out how many of the potential tenants will work adjacent as opposed to commute? And if two people rent an apartment, what the likelihood is that both will in lockstep work at Facebook?
I would say not that quite fine of a detail. So where this data really, what we use the data for is to, is to start our projection on how many people that. what we use the data for is to is to start our projection on how many people that that would live here would use either the bus or bike to get to their place of work, not necessarily identifying where they will work in in particular.
Well, right, yes. That makes sense. All right. So it is a model based prediction rather than a specific analysis of the proximity of this project to a major employer and the lesser proximity to three or four other major employers.
Yes, and we can adjust for those factors as well.
Okay, thanks. And then I think this other question is not so much related to the EIR, so I'll save that for the design period. So any other questions or suggestions regarding the scope for the EIR? Would commissioners like to hear what the project alternatives are? All right, I'm not seeing that, but perhaps for the sake of the public, could I ask Mr. Wisswell to review what the, I believe it was two project alternatives we have?
So I I should note that right now we don't have any project alternatives because we are still doing the impact analysis. So we'll develop those alternatives after the impact analysis is done. There is one alternative that's required to be analyzed under CECL, and that's just the no project alternative, which is as simple as it sounds. It's what if nothing happened? But other than that, we don't have any alternatives right now because we need those impacts first.
All right, I apologize. I think you may have actually said that before, but once it got on my list, it was stuck on my list. All right. Well, the staff is here asking us for scoping questions and any other input. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to suggest? All right, it looks like that is the measure of of the of the input from from this commission. And thank you for the presentation. And I believe that concludes our review of the EIR and item F1. So moving on to item G1, which is the study session and which we are asked to assess the architectural design and elements thereof. You know, Ms. Andemeyer, I believe that having called for public comment earlier, that that public comment was not limited to the EIR. But I was wondering if it would be advisable to call for public comment again, just in case anybody was self limited. What would you think?
Yes, I think it would be a good idea to open public comment again. Actually, in the staff report, we did divide it out as to recommend a two public comment periods. I think that'd be a good idea.
All right, thank you. So at this time, the public is invited to look on their screens and find that hand icon on the right of the screen along with the control panel. And click on that hand in order to indicate that you would like to speak to the study session. In other words, on the design of this project, design and design elements, positioning and so forth. And if you are unable, we did recently have someone who had trouble with the hand icon. If you could indicate that you're trying to do so using the chat, that would give immediate connection to staff to say you're trying to get on. Mr. Tapia, do we have any study session comments?
Good evening, Chair, members of the public. At this time, Chair Riggs, I'm not seeing any comments. But as usual, we can give it a second or two, see if any filter in.
Okay, let's do that. All right, seeing no additional public commenters, we will close the item G1, public comment period, and bring it back to our commissioners for questions and comments and any input that you feel is appropriate on this project. Mr. Barnes, you've been quite quiet this evening. Oh, your microphone is not on.
Yes, thank you. Listening to the details of the project. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kale?
Thank you. I just had one question about the architecture, and it's a it's a minor one. Something caught my eye in the staff report talks about how the the breakup is either studios or four bedrooms. Is that correct that there's no three bedrooms or two bedrooms or one bedroom?
Uh, that's right. We have studios and four bedrooms for baths in this layout.
What's the thinking behind that? Why no, why nothing in between?
So we have two projects in the same area. 441 rental units at Menlo Uptown next door that has a variety of unit types, studios, ones, twos, threes. And at Menlo Portal, 335 similarly have studios, ones, twos, and threes. So we thought this project and understanding the market needs that small studios and that four bedrooms, four baths could attract diverse tenant base that wasn't, whose needs weren't met at the other projects. We're Fair Housing manager. But you know, one thing to think about with four bedrooms, four baths is that around 40% of single people in the Bay Area share a home with an unrelated person or a roommate. And there aren't purpose built roommate apartment buildings. So this just goes to potentially satisfy that need within the population. It also helps to reduce the total rent check from any one person for these types of units.
Okay, thank you. Interesting, interesting approach. I had no other, no other questions and I'll just my simple overall, overall comment is that the the project is very provable. If we were to approve it tonight, which we're not, but I think the changes that have been made are are really great and I appreciate what's happening at the corner at the Paseo and the changes to the Paseo. The the massing and the color schemes are are nice, although it's a little bit on the gray side. It'd be nice if there are some some color other than the landscape. Other than that, I think it's a it's a very nice project and I appreciate the changes that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can interject, Commissioner Kale, you asked about the publicly accessible opens. If you go to sheet A dash zero, zero, one, seven, small a, it describes the publicly accessible open space. And you'll see that it does include a little raised area that is adjacent to the neighborhood benefit. Which is anticipated to be an extension of the park at that southeast corner. So I just wanted to clarify that is not at grade. It is a few steps up.
Understood. Thank you. I I was wondering if something was counted, was being added, that was added at a much higher level. So I appreciate that that input. Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and thank you for addressing the comments and feedback from our previous session together. Really appreciate both that you you did that and how you all crisply laid that out. In general, I would just along the lines of Mr. Kale, say that I think this looks like a really strong project. I have a series of, I guess, questions and then I'll also offer a couple of comments. One is that noted in the staff report that the bike parking is actually proposed of being below what is the standard set by the city currently. I wondered what the thinking was behind that.
Sure. So the bike parking required by the city is 1.5 bikes parking spaces per unit. And so if you think about it, that is assuming that, you know, 50% of our units have more than one bike. And due to the 20 additional BMR bonus market rate units, we are allowed some waivers and it due to limited space. We've decided that one and a half times 138 units or I believe it's 232 bike parking spaces was sufficient for this project.
And how do you take into consideration potential transportation modes in the future? Obviously, it's it's a confused time right now with public transportation, but with electric bikes, with scooters. Like where do I park my electric scooter and plug it in or my electric bike?
Yeah, I think that we're exploring right now. You know, in a non COVID world, we would explore shared electric bikes or shared scooters. And like you said, it's a unique time right now to start implementing those things. But it's certainly something we've seen become more and more popular. And, you know, we want to do everything possible to facilitate alternative transportation other than personal cars.
Yeah, that that's my broader point. I would certainly support having less parking and would go to bat for less parking for a really strong TDM plan and for alternative support of alternative modes of transportation. So kind of disappointing to me that we'd squeeze on the bikes or on options for this type of shared capacity in the future to put in some more parking spaces for cars. So that's just general feedback, you know, for the future in that category. On the on the BMR, you know, really appreciate your point about all the housing you're providing to the city and to the BMR units. Again, in the staff report, looking at what the city needs to provide, you're proposing the 21 would be very low. What would need to happen for you? What's the balance if you if you actually went to the the extremely low? What would you have to offset that with? If you decided to propose a sort of broader array of BMR units? Just understanding that, I mean, obviously this has to pencil out the 21 works at that category. What could happen if you could have some that would be lower? What would you have to offset that by?
So our, right, our, our proposal right now is 21 at low, not very low. And the BMR guidelines require, yeah, BMR guidelines require at low to provide a mixture of moderate income and very low and low units, which is what we had anticipated doing in previous projects until we realized there's a conflict in the BMR guidelines. So I'm going to attempt to explain this, but it's a little complicated. The BMR guidelines stipulate that at a maximum BMR rents can not be above 75% of market rate rents. And disregarding what's happening right now, because rents are down 30%, so things are totally of whack. But that would mean that none of our moderate income units would be able to achieve the stipulated rents because they would all be above 75% of market rate rent. That conflicts with another stipulation in the BMR code stating that we have to provide an average of or low income units. So they're at conflicts and we're unable to provide that mixture due to that conflict.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'd at least ask staff to help explain that from the staff perspective. Since it was in the staff report, which I appreciated to ask the question about how to get more very low into this mix. Is there a short answer from staff about that conflict?
Sure. So I can, I can take that question. So let's see, so the conflict that Andrew is speaking of is is the the income limits in terms of the price, rental price in the moderate. Right now, those those could be higher than the 75% limitation of what market rate might be. I think the important thing, though, is that market rate is not determined until obviously the lease up. So I just want to kind of make that clear in terms of how that 75% of market rate is calculated and how it relates to the income limits for a moderate income unit. And then further to kind of explain the averaging, really, the the BMR guidelines require that, yeah, it's either low income or low income equivalent. And the equivalent is usually created by an average of some very low or even extremely low that are all kind of weighted by our housing manager based on a formula that we have. And then you kind of wait the moderate, low, very low on that scale. And so you end up with kind of balancing it out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's hopeful. I guess I'm just conscious, given we don't have a lot more time between now and the end of the window where we're trying to get these 655 units across a particular spectrum. I don't quite see how we hit that as a city. So I'll just point out that I yeah, we're stuck here and we're not doing a great job providing very low housing. And if we've got projects like this that aren't helping us make that happen, then I'm not sure where we where we get that answered. So more just a comment in this mix. Appreciate the 21 units and they will help. Then I've got a, I just want to put a pin in the point around the amenities that Ms. Jones raised in her public comment. I know that that's not, you know, don't have the specific ones. You won't even know the the amount of money for those amenities for a little while in here. But the outdated list of amenities that Ms. Jones raised, I think, is really important. And then reinforces, appreciate the community outreach you've already done. But just reinforces really needing to hear back about community and community needs now or coming out of COVID and what the community needs are going to be, I think, are going to be crucial. And for me, that's going to be a big part of supporting the community amenities that allow the project to go forward in this mix. So I just wanted to put a pin in that. And then finally, for me on the Paseo, I just sort of echo Commissioner Kale's comments. Appreciate the work you've done on that. It's still hard. It's still hard to tell when you go down that side and then hang the left behind the building and there's the dog run that's there and it seems pretty tight. You know, I know you're you're it's incumbent upon you for some other projects, but just really want to make sure that the entirety of that connection that you talk about between those main thoroughfares of which this project would be a significant portion of it, that it really works for folks as opposed to that it feels like a dead end. You don't need to say more now. I know you've taken a look at it. But we just continue to urge that 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 work out well so that in fact people use it and feel comfortable using it. With that, those are both my questions and comments. Thank you for your time and your commitment to Menlo Park and for all you're doing and look forward to the next step.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Wait, I take that back. Could I just put, I said this before, I want to do some, the diesel generator thing for me. I hate. And I I do not see how we're committed to clean energy in this city. And then we essentially are going to put the worst of the worst as our backup in this mix. If you've got to put a diesel generator in there, I really need to understand why it doesn't work for at least natural gas or why you can't do battery powered backup in this mix. You don't need to answer it now, but at some point when we get down there. Because, you know, if we have these projects all over in that area, it already has an air quality problem, already has a lot of cut through traffic. You know, it goes on. And now we're going to put these diesel generators there. They're going to continue to run every month. I that just doesn't make sense to me. So I just wanted to put a pin in the comment I made earlier.
All right.
Understood. I can comment on that just briefly and I'm happy if it's all right with the chair. So battery powder power generators for a building of this size, my understanding is the size and the cost of the battery power generator that one would need for the power needs in a building like this make it make it not feasible. And then on the natural gas side, my understanding is they release more greenhouse gases than diesel. And the efficiency and the safety is not as not as beneficial as diesel. So I'm happy with that said, I'm happy to dig into this more. I'm not an expert on generators by any means. But we have a team of people that can look into this and I can follow up with you with more information.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Marcos, I have a follow up question which I skipped earlier, which is regarding the capacity of the diesel generators. If you have everyone home and it's either chilly or it's hot in the sunshine. And I do want to ask about the solar exposure. There's going to be a lot of demand. The diesel generators are assigned to what? I mean, will they work the house lights and the elevator only or is there, you know, will they work the community kitchen? You know, how much how much backup power do we get?
Yeah, I can talk in terms of, you know, the building facilities that we intend to power with a diesel generator and they are just as you stated, kind of emergency uses such as the elevator garage doors. You know, FOB systems and the like that would allow people to, you know, live for short periods of time. They're not intended to let people, you know, run AC at full blast by any means.
Well, it sounds like it's not actually enough for all of the units to run their lights, for example, in addition to the core items.
Yeah, it probably would not be. That is not the intention.
Chair Riggs, those systems, as you well know, are really designed for emergency purposes. They're not there, you know, unless they're designed or expanded for the duration to Andrew's point, which is not typical. They're short term emergency exiting purpose.
Right. And it makes sense for a residential project, at least historically, not to provide what commercially we would call backup power.
Correct.
That's a whole different level of four to six generators occupying a major portion of the second floor. So this is just sort of a throw out there observation for city council. New buildings that do not have gas service are very much at the mercy of PG&E and how efficient they are and how successful they are in avoiding the three significant annual impacts that I enumerated earlier. Having grown up where there were occasional hurricane impacts, I remember my mother was quite grateful that we had gas service so that we could cook whereas our neighbors could not. Having converted to the rather early all electric kitchens. And we did cooking for our neighbors, but that won't happen at Menlo Flats. Which leads me to another question as Ms. Bacall heard from me earlier. I was curious what other residential projects are within this area. Specifically, the RMU bonus area other than the Gray Star projects. And were you able to gather that information earlier? Ms. Bacall.
Yes. So we did send over a map that shows all the development projects in this area, which are residential to the commission earlier this afternoon. Did you get a chance to look at your email?
Not unless it was a follow up to another.
So we have, we have it here for you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I do not have. I'll just check quickly to see if it went to junk. No, I don't see it.
So this, this is the map that was sent this afternoon. Basically shows all the current projects that are in the pipeline for the Bayfront area.
All right. And that's the residential projects. All right. So we have, well, Sobrato is mixed use, as I recall.
That is correct, but I would have got to confirm that for me.
Yes. So this map actually shows residential, non residential and mixed use. So I think the residential is kind of an orange color. It predominantly residential projects are 111 Independence, Menlo Uptown, and then tonight's project, Menlo Flats. Menlo Uptown is nearby 141 Jefferson and I think 180, 186 Constitution are the addresses that make up that site. And you'll see it kind of just to the the northwest of Menlo Flats. The blue is mixed use projects. So Sobrato's mixed use is residential and a commercial office component. And then Menlo Portal, which is adjacent to 111 Independence and it's address 115 Independence and then 104 and 110 Constitution Drive. That that also has residential component and a smaller office component. At the number, the office square footage escapes me right now, but it's a mixed use project as well. And then, so that's kind of within the Marsh Chrysler Constitution Independence area. And then the other mixed use project is Willow Village over on Willow Road.
For circa 2040. Okay, so I was curious because the sense of community does or does not build according to what the what the land uses are around them. So it's it's just, it's very interesting to see where we are at the moment. So let me ask regarding solar issues. I actually had this problem for the building next door from which you took design cues. This in effect, this this concave surface of the upper floors with the glass on the unit faces typically the studio units in effect creates a faceted dish. So I guess this question would be for Mr. Manis. Have you determined what the focal point is for this dish that you've created?
Chair Riggs, are you referring to the plan or the solar orientation?
Well, the solar orientation of the upper floors as they face, I believe it's roughly southwest with a concave facade. The result will be that the glass reflections of the sun on a daily basis will be focused at some point in space. Do we know what that point in space is just just lest I park my car there?
No, and and perhaps I'm I'm not clear that the concave, you took that to setback along Jefferson or the courtyard portion. I'm I apologize.
Well, I may have misread the plan because actually what I studied was the eight and a half by 11 versions here. So
So every, everything is orthogonal and and generally the plan is north, south, east, west. It's pretty true to it. It's slightly, to your point, slightly northwest. But it's overwhelmingly sort of north, south, east, west relative to the orientations of the facade.
No, I'm embarrassed to say I'm actually referring to another project which I
I feel relieved. I was like, what did we draw?
Now, I've let the cat out of the bag for the next project, but anyway.
No problem.
All right. Thank you. And the FedEx and Lyft to drop off locations that was covered briefly at the beginning of the meeting, but I didn't catch where vehicles would actually pull off the roadway. So could you help me on the plan with that? I didn't actually see a curb invent.
So Andrew, maybe you could help me or Karen could help me a little bit.
Yeah.
Parking along Jefferson. I think that's what the chair is asking about.
Yep, I can, I can, I can help with this. So the idea, and it's not on the plan, Chair Riggs, so you wouldn't see it there. But the idea is that we don't want to stop traffic with deliveries or ride share who stop often. And we don't want to block bicycle lanes with those cars either. And so creating a niche along the street where those types of cars can pull in and not block traffic or the bicycle lanes is what we're working on with the city. And ideally, we'd love to each of our buildings because they're great amenities for our our residents, but they also are safer for everyone on the streets and in particular bicyclists. So it's not in there yet and we're working on it and I hope to have something to show you soon.
All right. And Chair Riggs, I would only add the other thing is that there is a loading dock all the way on the northwest portion there. So when it's not being used for loading or other things, there's a zone on that northwest corner that would accommodate vehicles if they're going to stay there for longer than the quick stop for delivery.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense for move in day and move out day. But we know that FedEx driver and Lyft driver are not going to pull anywhere. Cross on the front door and sort of roughly to the curb as although Lyft does a pretty good job. We should just be glad with that we don't have a Samtrans stop here because they figure if they're within 15 feet of the curb, they're they're pulled over.
I'll add here just to the staff's to staff's credit. They wanted to look at this area holistically. And so, you know, it doesn't, it may not make sense for every project to have a ride share pickup, drop off area in front of its door. But maybe every few blocks or every block or so it would make sense. So there, that's what they're working on. Create a holistic look at where these make sense in the area.
Okay, but maybe I should be addressing this to staff, but again, the Lyft driver and the FedEx driver aren't going to go 40 feet further than being directly a beam of the front door. So we could have a little wishful thinking about where they should collect, but and I love holistic design and holistic thinking, but in this case, each and every front door is going to need a pull over, especially a front door with over 100 units behind it. But thank you. It's clearly going to work out, even if it hasn't yet. So a tougher question, community amenities. Again, I apologize if I glossed over something, but I saw roughly 1,000 square feet of what looks like a community room. And then some of us feel that BMRs are a community amenity, although since BMRs and the bonus development are are linked, I don't see that as a connect Menlo mandated community amenity. So what what do we have coming or offered other than the thousand square feet?
So we don't know yet. And I think there's a few good reasons that we don't know yet. And one is, and probably the most important, is that the needs of the community are changing so quickly that we want to be able to make the most informed decision when we need to make that decision. And we haven't had evaluation for this project done by an appraiser yet. So we don't know what that is. It's it's just challenging to to ask for information on that without knowing what the degree of of community amenity will have to give. That idea is, and you'll see this in our other two projects as well, is that there is an onsite component. And there is an offsite component that from what we have learned from the community should go to benefit the Bell Haven area. And so those are the parameters under which we're trying to to satisfy community amenities. So an onsite portion and an offsite.
All right, especially for the offsite portion, it makes sense that this is just not the time. I was hoping that you were thinking about the issue now and not waiting for the appraisal, but especially given that there will be a certainly a leaning toward offside offsite amenities that makes all the sense in the world. So I don't have any other questions. And unless things have changed over the last 10 minutes or so. I think I think the reaction of the commission tonight is that you've presented a nice project, a well thought out project, a project that's coming along very well to its final presentation and approval. And I have to second the comments that were made earlier that we appreciate your responsiveness. And certainly appreciate that you're building residential in Menlo Park. So I thank you. And I believe this closes our hearing G1. Ms. Baggett, did I leave anything out?
No, Chair, thank you. I think we have everything we need to move forward.
All right, wonderful. So thank you very much to the Gray Star and architectural teams for for coming tonight. We'll move from here. Yes. I'm sorry, we will, that closes the study session, so we will move on to item H, which is regular business. Tonight, we have a presentation from our subcommittee regarding Menlo Park ADU regulations. And Mr. Dawn, would you like to lead this discussion?
Yeah, I had a misunderstanding on the schedule, so I actually don't have anything to update you on. I don't know if my fellow subcommittee members have a different view. They're certainly welcome. I I think actually, yeah, the idea was for Mr. Paz to present his slides on ADUs rather than the committee to report. I see Paz waving for our attention.
Yes, thank you. That was that was also my understanding of this agenda item. So I'd be happy to give the presentation now and then there there will be time at the end for for questions to staff.
Now that you mentioned it, this is my understanding as well. So I apologize for steering us in the wrong direction, Mr. Paz. We're looking forward to what you have what you have prepared.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just go ahead and put this into full screen mode and then we can we can get started here with the current ADU regulations for the for the city. As was stated just a moment ago, I'm associate planner Ori Paz with the city's planning division. Happy to be here to share the regulations that we've implemented this year. As many of you know, the state adopted new ADU regulations at the beginning of this year and local jurisdictions had to adjust our regulations to meet the state standards. And so as part of an effort to do that in February, staff brought changes through an urgency ordinance to the city council to bring our code up to what the state was mandating. This evening, I'll go over some of the new terms that we see in the state regulations and also in our local ordinances, as well as the comparison between what was adopted as part of the urgency ordinance and what we had in our previous ordinances, as well as share some reference materials that the city has made available and that the county has on a on a broader level through some of the organizations that are working within San Mateo County. And then we can discuss some of the the next steps that we've identified. And as I noted, we will have an opportunity for questions at at the end. Moving into the definitions of the terms, we've shifted to accessory dwelling unit or ADU. This was formerly called a secondary dwelling unit in city regulations. You you may have seen it called a granny unit or an in-law unit. For the purposes of our conversation moving forward, we'll use ADU. And in our ordinances and materials, we've also shifted to ADU, which is what the state is calling them. So everybody can use the same term. We have a new term now, which is a junior accessory dwelling unit or a JADU. And this is a new category of ADUs that was created as part of the state regulations. It's similar to the other types of ADUs. However, it must be located within the existing area of a primary dwelling. And it has to have its own kitchen, but it's allowed to have a shared bathroom, which is unique among the different classes of ADUs. Here we have some visual definitions and these are also in our municipal code. So this shows an example of a detached ADU. It's a separate structure from the primary dwelling, which is shown not blue. The detached ADU is shown here in blue. Now you'll see an attached ADU on the left and an interior or a junior ADU shown shaded in blue on the right. Primary difference between an attached ADU or an interior is an attached ADU includes the addition of square footage either adjacent to the existing structure, as you see in in this example, or if it were a second story addition or the addition of a basement, those would all be attached ADUs. If you convert a portion of the home to an ADU, that would be an interior ADU. Looking now at some of the elements of the urgency ordinance that was adopted, we see one of the the larger changes were the number of ADUs that are allowed on a given lot. So for a for a property that has a single family residence, you're now allowed up to two ADUs. So that would be a total of three dwellings on a single family property, the primary dwelling and then up to two ADUs. And then for properties that are developed with multifamily buildings, you're allowed two detached ADUs and you may convert up to twenty five percent of the units to ADUs to end those would need to be interior ADUs that are converted from nonliving space. We saw the creation of the JADU, as I mentioned previously, and that's permitted for for any property that has a single family home. So that's not allowed if there's a a multifamily building on the property. We also saw a fairly drastic change in regulation with the allowed exceedance of the floor area limit and building coverage maximums. So the the state created a rule that up to an eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit would be allowed to exceed the floor area limit or lot coverage. And and that's really to foster the creation of of more of these units on sites that that may be built out or it would be a challenge to to get a unit due to restrictions on floor area and and building coverage. And so that's sometimes seen or or called not an exception. So there's a there's a little bit of a nuance there. It's that an ADU can exceed the FAL, but it would still count towards the floor. It'd still count as floor area. And other changes that we've seen, the elimination of a minimum lot size previously, as we'll get into, there was a six thousand square foot minimum lot size and that's been eliminated. We've also eliminated the subjective design requirements. So an ADU is no longer required to be aesthetically similar in design to the primary dwelling. And and there are some modified standards for ADUs up to eight hundred square feet, as we'll see ahead. Additional changes were the prohibition of short term rentals for new ADUs. An ADU that was previously constructed prior to January first of twenty twenty would be allowed to to engage in a short term rental through Airbnb or some other arrangement. However, new ADUs built January first or afterwards, actually, it's a building permit submitted after January first twenty twenty would not be allowed to engage in a short term rental and that's a thirty day lease minimum. Owner occupancy requirements were eliminated for new ADUs. And in the older regulations, an ADU must be an ADU or the primary dwelling must have been owner occupied. We've also seen an increase in the allowed number of bedrooms and size. So whereas previously, one bedroom was the the max without use permit. And now two bedrooms are allowed and then ADU detached ADU can be up to a thousand square feet. Or if it's attached, fifty percent of the primary dwelling. There's no impact fees for ADUs that are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. And we've maintained, oh, sorry, the the requirements for discretionary review for ADUs have have been removed. So you're no longer required to get a use permit to construct an ADU. However, we we did maintain the flexibility for folks to request a use permit if they seek to modify the development standards as written in the ordinance. A quick note on on why we elected to go the urgency ordinance route as opposed to the standard process to to amend the zoning ordinance, which includes more community outreach involvement from the commissions. And and really, the the urgency ordinance was appropriate, given the urgency. The state laws went into effect on January first and the city had a number of pending applications. There's a another provision that was added with the state laws and and that's that staff needs to process these applications. So a complete application needs to be processed within sixty days. And so the combination of the the backlog of applications, the changes to the ordinance and the time constraints led to to the decision to go through the urgency ordinance process. And that was related to the city council in February this year. The other question that has been raised is why not implement other changes with these, since we were already going for an urgency ordinance? And at the time, we looked at the the number of changes that were being proposed. It was already very substantial and without adequate community outreach, it didn't seem appropriate to expand beyond the scope of what the state was mandating at the time. And as we as we know presently, and we knew in February, we we understood that there was going to need to be more refinement later on. And so we knew that we would need to clean up the zoning ordinance for a number of elements. And then we have we have future changes that will that will be upcoming that we expect. So to dive into the comparison between what was adopted as part of the urgency ordinance and the prior regulations, here you'll see a table for the attached ADU unit type. As noted previously, the minimum lot size has now been removed. Previously, it was six thousand square feet. The number of units allowed on a lot with the single family home is two ADUs. One of them must be an attached or interior ADU, or it could be a JADU. Again, that's the smaller unit type must be within the area of the primary dwelling. And there you would be allowed a second detached ADU in addition to your primary dwelling, which brings it to the total of three that I noted previously. The maximum unit size for an attached ADU is a thousand square feet or fifty percent of the area of the primary dwelling, whichever would be greater. And there is still that flexibility that someone could request a use permit if if for some reason they they needed to exceed that maximum size. And that would be up to the discretion of the planning commission. Subdivision, there's a provision that was added in state law that certain nonprofits, it's a very specific qualification, but a an ADU could be subdivided and sold independently. But that would need to be through a through a nonprofit. And then the setback changes were also somewhat substantial. So the the front setback is required to be the same as was previously or is required for the primary dwelling in most zoning districts. This is twenty feet. And the side and rear setbacks for an attached ADU were reduced to four feet. This is different than than what the previous regulations allowed, which required the the attached ADU to meet the same same setbacks as the primary dwelling. So we'll just continue continue down to new categories in in this chart. This is again, still discussing attached ADUs. We see the maximum number of bedrooms again, as I noted previously, there there was a one bedroom max in our prior regulations. The adopted urgency ordinance now allows two bedrooms and there's no limit on the bathrooms. And similar to the size, you could increase the number of bedrooms with a use permit request. The floor area limit exceedance and lot coverage maximum allowable exceedance we see here that was not previously allowed in our prior regulations, but ADUs up to eight hundred square feet are now allowed to exceed the floor area or and or lot coverage by up to the area of the ADU, provided it's no larger than eight hundred square feet. If it is larger than eight hundred square feet, then the ADU is not eligible for any lot coverage or floor area limit exceedance. And there have been a number, I think we have had two projects come before the commission that discussed that provision in some detail. The daylight plane has not changed for an attached ADU. We'll see it's a little bit different for detached ADUs, but it would still be the same as the the primary dwelling for an attached ADU. And parking, one parking space is required typically for an ADU. However, there are a number of exceptions that someone could request or qualify for given proximity to transit and another a number of other factors. We do note, however, that there there is no on-street parking. And so in our conversations with residents or or folks who are interested in the ADUs, staff does does raise that. And with the flexibility that's granted to off-street parking spaces for ADUs, it's often possible to accommodate at least one uncovered off-street parking space, either in tandem to existing garage spaces or elsewhere on the lot. And and that's advisable, given again, that restriction on on on-street parking permits. Moving to the end of the chart for the attached ADU comparison, we see the aesthetic similarity requirement has been removed. Prior regulations required that an ADU be developed in a similar style to the primary dwelling. And the owner occupancy requirement has also been, it's removed and modified. So any unit that was issued building permit after January first is no longer required to have an owner occupant with the exception of a new JADU. And then the short term rental provision that that we discussed. So there's a restriction on short term rentals for ADUs that receive a permit after January first or for J, but but for JADUs, there is no restriction on on a short term rentals. And then there's a a new provision for delayed enforcement. So a unit that was converted without the benefit of a building permit may request delayed enforcement of compliance. And so there's a process that the city has for someone to demonstrate that they would meet all of the life life safety requirements and delay enforcement of any other building compliance issues for five years. Moving now to the detached ADU, I I will spare you reading all of the categories, but I've I've drawn your attention to some of the key differences here with it was golden on on my screen. It looks a little faded here, but the the maximum unit size for a detached ADU is one thousand square feet. And again, that could be modified through a use permit if someone wanted to request a larger unit. Previously, the maximum size was six hundred and forty square feet. So that's a somewhat substantial change, increase in in the size of the allowable units. And then we see here that the the setbacks for a unit that are eight hundred square feet or smaller would be four feet at the side and rear. The front would again be maintained at twenty feet. Previously, an ADU would be allowed to be built up to ten feet from the rear. So there was a reduced rear setback for for ADUs and then five feet at the the side and rear with neighbor approval. So the the neighbor approval provision has has been removed. And that was a state state mandate to allow eight hundred square foot ADUs, four feet from the the side and rear. And I will note that at eight hundred and one square feet and and above, the the rear setback does become ten feet. And then an ADU would be required to meet the the setback for the primary dwelling. And so that's for the the larger ADU types. Moving through the the table here, the daylight plane has been eliminated for ADUs up to eight hundred square feet in size. So again, that's the the state. So again, that's the the state mandated flexibility for for that unit type. So an ADU that's eight hundred square feet or smaller can be four feet from the side and rear and up to sixteen feet in height with no daylight plane. Whereas previously, there was a daylight plane similar to to what we had for for other accessory structures. And then parking, I'll highlight again for a detached ADU. One parking space is typically required. There are parking exceptions for proximity to transit and those other items. They're also listed on on our webpage. And we'll get into some of the resources in a moment here. But again, no on-street permit parking, no on-street permits for for ADUs allowed in in so the city. And so do encourage folks to consider providing parking onsite. And then finally, the getting into some of the other elements that are specific to detached ADUs. We see conversions of accessory buildings. So previously, you could convert an accessory building to an ADU. And that's still the case with some additional flexibility. So you can maintain existing setbacks and perform whatever upgrades are necessary to meet the building code to convert an accessory structure or building to a unit. And then detached ADUs are also, they also qualify for the delayed enforcement. Now we can take a a quick look at the new clear new kid on the block, the JADU. So similar to the attached or interior, more similar to the interior ADU, rather. The JADU must be within the size of the existing home. The maximum size is five hundred square feet rather than eight hundred square feet or fifty percent. See what see for an interior ADU. The other change here or difference, rather, is that a JADU is permitted to share a bathroom with the primary dwelling. And the other the other elements are similar, with the exception that there's no parking required for JADU. And owner occupancy is required for JADU. Okay, we're we're moving now into the multifamily buildings. And so these requirements are a little bit different than what you would see at a property with an existing single-family home or a proposed single-family home. The number of units, as I noted previously, is the you were allowed to detached ADUs and then up to twenty-five percent of the existing units with a minimum of one could be converted into interior units. And those would again need to be converted from non-living space. The maximum size for the detached ADUs is one thousand square feet. And up to one of the ADUs on the property may exceed the maximum FAR or lot coverage. The setbacks for the detached would be four feet at the side and rear. And the height would be limited to sixteen feet for the detached units. Again, the interior units would need to be interior to the existing space. And so no allowable expansions for those conversions. And so the the height would be determined by whatever the existing height is. Parking is required for the detached ADUs, but not for the interior ADUs. And we should also note that if the interior ADU is created through the conversion of a carport or similar off-street parking, that parking is not required to be replaced. And so that's that's again a newer newer requirement. Owner occupancy is not required, and short-term rentals are not allowed for ADUs in multifamily buildings. Okay, moving into some of the reference materials that we've prepared. There are ADU webpages now that are available through the city's webpage. There's one for ADUs where there's a single-family residence on the property and then a page for the the ADUs for a property with an existing multifamily building. We also will, we also have a searchable FAQ module. So now you can you can access information a little bit more easily, either through your search engine or searching on the webpage. Or if you want to navigate specifically to the frequently asked questions module on the city webpage, you can do that as well. The municipal code was updated. So Code Publishing is the service that that hosts the municipal code. And chapter sixteen point seven nine has been updated with the information. We created a new AD checklist and updated our non-conforming structures handout, as well as our zoning summary sheet to note the areas in the city where an ADU would be allowable. And and that's that's expanded quite substantially from where they were allowed previously. Some additional resources, Home For All San Mateo County. And they have a toolkit that that talks about some of the the elements of a of an ADU, such as the financing and the construction and and those those areas which are outside of the planning wheelhouse that we included for folks if if that's of interest. And then Twenty One Elements also has a a page on second units, and they've compiled some some materials as well. Looking forward, we've we've identified some next steps for the short term. And and those are largely cleanup items, cleanup amendments to the zoning ordinance. Excuse me, where we've noticed secondary dwelling unit snuck into the text. And and we need to, we need to update that to accessory dwelling unit for consistency. So there's a number of items that staff has identified for for clarity. And we're hoping to bring those to the to the city council in in the coming months. On the longer term, we will continue to evaluate our current regulations and the the units that that we're seeing. We saw in twenty twenty twenty-five ADU applications, which was an increase from the sixteen that we saw in in twenty nineteen. And that's not all of these have gone all the way through the the process. But and looking at the numbers earlier today, we did increase the number of units that we've seen applications for. So that is exciting. And then we are beginning the preliminary process meeting with some of the other cities in San Mateo County to to work on strategy for the the housing element update, which is right around the corner. The the deadline is December of twenty twenty-two. But those things quite quickly and do require a lot of outreach and coordination, both on the the community engagement side as well as on the the staff coordination side. And so we've already kind of begun to to look at that. And then we were awarded an SB two grant earlier this year. So there are funds available to create additional outreach materials and explore some of the other tools to aid in ADU production. And we'll continue to consider some additional AD revisions as as we hear from the folks who are are building them and then interested in hearing from the commission as well. And that is, that is all I have. So happy to take questions.
All right. Thank you, Ori. Commission members, any questions? That's a lot of data. Vice Chair Doran.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank Mr. Paz. I thought that was a great presentation. I had a number of questions as you went through it, and most of them got answered before you got to the end of it. So I think that's a measure of a good presentation. But I do have a few remaining questions. One is on the the status of our current ordinance as an urgency ordinance. Does that have any continuing significance? Or is the fact that it was an urgency ordinance only important in the the timeframe for its initial passage? In other words, is there any sunset attached to this ordinance because it's an urgency ordinance?
I do not believe there is a sunset, but I would be happy to bring that question to the city attorney to confirm and follow up.
Okay, thank you. Next question. So most of our discretionary approvals have been removed for units below eight hundred square feet. And the states mandated, you know, setbacks and other parameters for units. I'm talking about detached units now, below eight hundred square feet. But the state also prohibited impact fees for units of seven hundred and fifty square feet and below. So we've got this category of seven hundred and fifty square feet to eight hundred square feet, which I would imagine would be a fairly popular category. And it seems to be from the, you know, the app, the projects that we've seen come through the planning commission. People want to build something eight hundred square feet or approximately eight hundred square feet. So those are subject to impact fees since they're over seven hundred and fifty square feet. Can you give us an idea of what an impact fee would be for an eight hundred square foot detached ADU in middle park in monetary terms?
Uh, yes. So I will note that the actually the transportation impact fee is is waived for all ADUs. So an ADU of any size would not be required to pay their TIF. And that was a that was a deliberate expansion of kind of the flexibility for for ADUs during the most recent TIF amendment. As far as the the other fees, like the construction road impact fees, it's it's proportional to what would be required for the primary dwelling. And I do not have the like a a dollar amount at this time. But I I'd be happy to to follow up with the building division. And I could get you a a use case for that that eight hundred square foot ADU.
Yeah, I would be interested in that. But just to clarify. So if a four thousand square foot primary dwelling would incur, you know, an impact fee of whatever, say, ten thousand dollars, then if the an eight hundred square foot detached ADU, I suppose, a attached would be the same, twenty would be twenty percent of the primary dwelling size. So would it then have an impact fee of two thousand dollars? Is that what you mean by prorated?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Yeah, I would be interested in the actual dollar. It was just ballpark for all those impact fees, if you could follow up on that. And then finally, there is this new requirement that for the non-discretionary applications, the applications that come within the state guidelines, so eight hundred square feet and below. You've got a sixty-day deadline for action on that application. What happens if if you aren't able to respond in sixty days? Do they they build whatever is in the application?
Yeah, so we we've we've collaborated with the city attorney on on this question because that was at the end of last year, when we first learned about this new requirement. That was one of the things that we were concerned about. And they clarified that the the sixty-day shot clock is for a complete application. So once a project is deemed complete, that means that there they would be in compliance with the zoning and related requirements. Then we have sixty days to to process that. Otherwise, that application would become effective. And and that distinction of complete is important because, like you said, we we wouldn't want something that's unsafe or, you know, otherwise deficient to be approved just because of the time limitation.
Okay, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Sorry, any other questions from commissioners? I have a question. And pardon me for being a little slow on this. The the junior ADUs death, but the very definition and the and the way in which it's written, it seems to be simply saying, yes, you can have a roommate. I mean, is there really anything anything beneficial to a homeowner to declare a JADU rather than simply renting out one of their rooms, which, to my knowledge, has been legal and common practice forever? What is the differentiation? I'm missing something. I know I am.
The the kitchen is probably the biggest differentiating factor between renting a room and then creating a an additional unit. One of the distinctions between a JADU and say, an interior ADU, which kind of is similar in its look and feel, are the the restrictions on short-term rentals. So you you could not rent out an interior ADU for less than thirty days. However, if you developed a JADU, you could list that on Airbnb or something similar to that. And then the the fees and and size limitations differ as well in the bathroom.
It's coming back to me that in single-family residential, you weren't allowed to have more than one kitchen. And so this would override that prohibition. Okay. All right. It's just a curious way in which that it's written that a JADU has a kitchen, implying that it's a minimum requirement as opposed to a a release from a prohibition. All right. And I don't actually have any other questions. Anyone else? Andrew? No, okay. I saw I saw your fist raised, but I wasn't sure it was a hand or not.
No.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ori, for presenting to us. Because there's the it it's a fairly complex just in the details ordinance and proof just in the fact that it took you probably twenty minutes to give us a short version of it. But again, again, we thank you. I didn't really want to. I I have read the old ADU ordinance all the way through. I just wasn't eager to start again on that.
Well, we're happy to help and proud that that the information is also a little bit more accessible on the webpage and and in the materials than than the previous ordinance. So we're we're striving towards that.
All right. And I'm currently going through for a client a an amnesty application, so I'll be able to report on that process, I hope, soon. Knock on wood. All right. If there are no other questions for Ori, it appears that we are complete with the agenda item. So that would complete item H1. Item H2 is a review of the draft commission meeting dates for next year. Corinna, that I guess we would turn that over to you.
Yes, Sam, I don't have any updates on the staff report. This is just kind of an opportunity for commissioners to let us know of any conflicts or any other comments on the agenda. The commission has the option to take a vote or just to give individual feedback to staff.
On on this item, on the on the dates?
Oh, yes. I apologize. I I said agenda. I meant on the, yeah, planning commission dates for twenty twenty-one.
Well, I know with all the vacations that I had planned to Hawaii and the Caribbean and so forth, some of them could get in the way. And then there's Monday Night Football. But I guess if my fellow commissioners are planning to attend, I I probably should. Anyone else has a have a see a ready conflict? I, as anyone ever does done an audit to see whether. COVID-19 era accepted, if we. It's a planning commission met more often than the city council. I'll guess not. But, okay, so. Seems like a good idea to print or save staff report 20-052-PC. As an advance warning of when we will be busy next year. And speaking of being busy. Information items, we have one more meeting left this year, is that right, Corinna?
Yes, that's correct, so we do have back-to-back meetings again, so next Monday. December 14th, we have a meeting and the Menlo Park. Community Center is on that agenda and the commission will be making a recommendation to the city council on that item. And then we also have single-family homes. That are on the agenda with use permit applications.
We have how many single-family homes?
We have two on there.
Okay. All right, and. Thank you for that, any final comments, announcements or anything from our fellow commissioners? All right, seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. DeCarty. Oh, I guess that was a goodbye.
No, it wasn't, I'm sorry, I just can't click buttons this time of night. Ms. Sandomeyer, would it be possible to send around the PowerPoint presentation from that? Special Housing Commission meeting on the 11th. To all of us on the planning commission?
Yeah, that should be possible, it's probably also will be included in the minutes. So I'll see if those have been posted or if we can just get the PowerPoint to you separately.
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else? All right, then this meeting is adjourned at 9:35 PM, thank you all.
Thank you, Chair Riggs, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.